All right then, so good evening one and all. We've just come out of the closed meeting. Are there resolutions that we need to deal with? Yes indeed. Go ahead, Councilor Belanguet. Be resolved that council authorizes the Director of Finance. Well, we need a motion to come out of the closed meeting that we were just in. I move that we close the closed meeting we were in. Seconded by Councilor Grimaire. Go ahead. Be resolved that council authorizes Director of Finance to retain services of Mr. Alain Rosfau for one day per week for a period of up to four months to offer management services offered to the computer department as stipulated in the closed meeting that was held on the 4th of June 2018. Seconded by Councilor Grimaire. All those in favor carried. Thank you. Announcements? Do any of you have any announcements to make? Well, I guess things will go rather quickly then. Let's go on now to question period. If anyone has any question or questions to address sound council, step up to the mic, give your name and address.
My name is Roland La Bonté and I attended last month to ask a question. Do you have an answer to my question? No, I do not, but you'll have to ask that question to your mayor because you're not a resident of Clarence and Rockland. Well, my daughter wants to know how much money goes to Toronto instead of... Well, if you're speaking on behalf of your daughter and things relating to her property, all she has to do is make that request. Well, I'm the one in charge of her... Well, hold on. Go up to the office and ask Mrs. Violette this information. Mrs. Violette, how much does it cost us to attend conferences? Mr. Violette, do you have any information as to how much it costs to attend conferences?
He makes a request through Access of Information.
That's the best way is to make a request through Access of Information.
Yeah, but that costs money.
I'm sorry?
Well, it also costs us money to perform that particular research. Five dollars is all it takes.
Well, I've been refused in the past. Five dollars and I've been refused in the past because I was told it was confidential or I was told often it was privileged information.
Mrs. Violette? No. And with regards to expenditures incurred by members of council, there's a report that's issued each and every year brought to council table to be adopted. All of the information that's relevant to what you're seeking is in that document. If you need further documents or details, you need to access those through Access of Information.
The only report I wish to obtain is how much expenditure is incurred by the city of Clarence and Rockland and the town of Rockland. How much you spend to pay for meetings in Toronto by members of town council or visits to Toronto. You have to make a request through the Access of Information. Well, don't tell me that because I asked you the same question last month. Well, I just learnt about it. Oh, well, you've been sitting as mayor for quite a long time and you've just learnt about this? Yes. Fine then. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you folks. Let's move on. Members' items. Councilmember's items. Go ahead.
... while province-wide celebration, whereas seniors have contributed and continue to contribute immensely to the life and vibrancy of this community, whereas seniors continue to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this community, whereas their contributions, past and present, warrant appreciation and recognition and their stories deserve to be told. Whereas the health and well-being of seniors is the interest of all of the future adds to the health and well-being of the community, whereas the knowledge and experience seniors pass on to us continues to benefit all, be resolved that municipal council will hereby proclaim June 1st to 30th, 2018 Seniors Month in Clarence-Rockland and encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate their accomplishments of all our seniors. Be resolved that the city celebrates the Seniors Month with the Clarence-Rockland Senior Games which will be held on June 12th to the 14th at the Bourget Community Center organized by the Clarence-Rockland Seniors Coalition.
Seconded by Councilor Zandt. All those in favor carried then. Thank you. I believe there's a supper that's held on the 14th at the Bourget Community Hall. Yes. Consent items? Are there any items you'd like to remove from the regular list of consent items? Yes. 12.2 sub C, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Levaire, anything else from you? No? In English or in French? It's your choice. I'll go in French. Be resolved that the following items, as indicated under the heading Consent Items appearing on the agenda of the regular meeting of town council on 4th of May... 4th of June, I'm sorry, 2018, be adopted. Item 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings, regular meeting of May 23rd, 2018, and Committee of the Hall of May 23rd, 2018. 12.2... 10.2, I'm sorry. The following recommendations from Committee of the Hall of May 23rd, 2018, resolution to support the municipality of East Ferris in regard to the landfill projects and resolution to void an invoice pertaining to a car accident. 10.3, resolution to appoint volunteer firefighters. Seconded by Councilor Zandt. All those in favor carried. Councilor Lallon, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to read the resolution. Whereas the Infrastructure and Land Planning Department brought forward a list of 55 approval conditions as recommended in the report AME-18-R and three additional recommendations brought forth at the 3rd of May, 2018 Land Planning Committee and whereas a Land Planning Committee recommended the exclusion of two of the conditions that were presented therein during the public meeting and the modification of one of the conditions in report AME-18-28-R. Be resolved that council approves the draft plan of subdivision submitted by CH Clement Construction for the estate of Eugène Le Violette, file number D-12-123 with approval conditions as listed under section 7 of the report AME-18-30-R as recommended by the Land Planning Committee. Someone to second this resolution? Yes. Move that we second this resolution for discussion purposes. Seconded by Councilor Zandt. Fine. Go ahead.
Well, I wanted to second this for discussion purposes? Yes. I believe, Mr. Mayor, that we've all received a letter from Solway Wright, but before receiving this letter again this afternoon, I made the rounds this morning and this afternoon just to visit this property and at present, I take a look at the Morse Project for an example or the Le Violette Project, projects here, there and everywhere, and there are pathways, and I'm sorry if I make use of the English term, that run from one end to the other of the said properties. The Deschamps Park is located on the other side and there's subdivision being developed east of the proposed development. They'd be blocked off entirely and for them to be connected to water and sewer services, they'll have to go up and around David Street. There's no way to do so otherwise. I didn't speak to anyone and I analyzed this property on my own. We're creating a locked land situation here by doing so and we're preventing future development. And this is located smack dab in the middle or close to the middle of the city of Clarence and Rockland. Mr. Leonard?
Mr. Mayor, there is a recommendation forthcoming to have access through that development. However, there are some things to consider for the information of all members of town council and a brief history of what's happening. We were approached by the owners of the golf club one week prior to the Land Planning Committee meeting and they approached us with the fact that they wished to have an access. It didn't give the department much time to analyze properly the situation as it stood with regards to the policies that governed the situation. In spite of all of this, it's the department's opinion as well as members of the Prescott-Russell Land Planning Division here that in terms of planning, what made most sense was to have an access granted to us through this property or development. Following this planning department meeting, there was further discussion to secure access through other properties, not this particular property per se, and it's the planning committee's recommendation not to have an access through that particular development because there was a possibility of other properties that might cater to our needs with regard to this. Would it might be possible to have access south of that property? There's a street that stops close by there.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In fact, there are many other... There are quite a few other properties that are not in a state of development but that have a potential of affording future access to the proposed development. Well, there are no proposed development, but if any developers wanted to develop in that area in the future. I believe there's a street that stops at the last row of buildings in that vicinity. Yes, yes indeed, Mr. Mayor. In CH Clement's plan and their consultants came up with the conclusion there was access to a neighboring property that meets the requirement of the set out in the official plan and this property could eventually cater to the needs of the golf club people. If I... There is a roundabout at the end of that particular street I'm alluding to. Yes.
Councilor Zandt?
Mr. Leonard, I just wanted to have a proper understanding of what we talked about during the last meeting. Is it the responsibility of a developer to ensure that another developer is connected properly to the city or is it the town of Clarence and Rockland's sole responsibility to do so? Or if a purchaser came up and stated his intent to purchase a property? Because the onus is not upon us to create opportunities for further developments to develop or further developers to develop further property. Well, the town, for example, might decide to go ahead with an intersection and such some such things, but in the majority of cases, the developer through his side plan or his or her side plan needs to clear this out. In this case, the golf club in keeping with the official plan is designated as an open space and the open space designation means that the property as it stands right now is not recognized as a develop... or developable, as land that is proper or caducous for development. If we deal with a residential property and this particular property needs to go through a type of process to be deemed a developable property, then it would be another matter. But matters and... But town council members need to keep in mind that notwithstanding the decision to be taken tonight, we risk being appealed one way or the other. The official plan states that this property is considered as non-developable. However, it's proper to offer access to a property that could or ought to be developed. And the golf club people told us that their intent was to develop that area, but no action was taken to modify the official plan either at the counter or the town level. Just to follow up on this, if you'll allow me, Mr. Mayor. It's good practice to do so, but are there any other examples whereby a developer would have created access for another developer? When you're saying it's a good practice because this is what we've done or are we trying to invent something new? No, Mr. Mayor. 100% of developers stem from access granted by other developers. As other councilors have stated, we cannot create landlocked situations. It's part and parcel of the planning act, going hand in hand with the official plan of course. There are some properties south of that area. In this particular case, I'm in agreement with you that it's not the only access, but it's the only access that's presently being developed. However, there are other eventual possibilities or possibilities of eventual connections there however. Yes, because we've received a request for our development there, but our intent or there's a possibility of creating another one in the future. Well, in 10 or 15 years? Who knows? But I'm ready to take a concrete decision, not based upon a receipt of a letter saying this is my intent or I want to, but just some concrete wish to say that this is what's going to be done. But Mr. Lallon wished to connect himself to water services and this is what he's asking. Is this the only area that allows him to connect himself to water services? Well, it's the most efficient spot, but not the only one. As the intersection has in that particular area has access to services. Well, if we decide to grant access to that area and if the pipe needs to be widened to ensure future development, who needs to pay for this? That depends on the agreement in between developers. If developers were to arrive at an agreement amongst each other to circum... to avoid this problem, that we've just resolved water and sewer problems, but there might be other means we might adopt to guarantee physical access to water and sewer services. Yes. And the planning department might request that the planner arrive at an agreement with the developer. Well, if I'm one of the golf club people, I might say, well, I have an option of connecting myself there other than connecting myself further down because I'm not an expert. If I, you know, have to go through 400 meters instead of 450 meters to connect, it would cost me less. Well, yes, we need to come up with an agreement amongst developers to resolve that situation, but there were no agreements arrived at. That's not that I would... Not that I know of. No. Well, if I take a look at street right up to the golf club, you could... You could develop right up to the entrance of that area. Well, at the planning department, what was discussed, if I'm not mistaken, is the very last phase of their development and what this did was that it allowed people to come up with an agreement if ever this could be done. However, I do not want to speak for the developer because I do not want to create any contentious issues here or give rise to any contentious issues. I don't know at what step they will install this step in the process they will be following towards the development. I'd just like to add this. I remember that at one of the meetings, both developers were in attendance, we might ask them that... It seemed that there was willingness on behalf of one developer if they wanted to go through or gun it forward that they had no problem in entering to discussions to resolve the matter before going on to that process. I don't want to speak on behalf of the developer though. On one side of the street, either north or south, there could be a connection left there, an open connection left there to cater to the needs of the golf course folks or people. But that's something that should ought to be negotiated amongst contractors. I understand. I'm not aware of the procedure itself. Well, anyways, I believe that we run the risk of being brought to appeal if we do implement the recommendations and if we add on to the recommendations, we run the risk of being subjected to appeal. Our recommendation was made and the planning committee recommendation was made. Councilor Lallon?
Definitely a subdivision must have a minimum of two access points, an entrance and an exit point. But we know the importance of the golf club here in Rockland and we know that at present this is not the one that brings in as much to keep the golf club open. There are only about 200 or some odd members. If the others can maintain an 18-hole venue, they're looking, seeking on selling off at least an excess nine holes. There's an access on David Street and I went around the subdivision and I didn't see any other access points to that area. You see, the city of Clarence and Rockland is always looking towards the future, towards all future developments and we're asking that a road be built along that area. The Saint-Jacques Road in Rockland, there's an entrance in the middle of Saint-Jacques Street that goes towards Water Course and we keep that open to facilitate future developments. I didn't think about that roadway initially, but I said to myself that it was about the only area for water and sewer services, especially on Caron Street, there's... That's the only 12-inch pipe in existence there that would sufficiently be able to cater to the needs of divisions or subdivisions in that area. That's why I was alluding to the possibility of obtaining access to that area to ensure future subdivision in the future. Mr. Leonard?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about developing another part of... Another piece of land along Caron Street, south of there. An owner showed interest in developing there. Well, could develop there. Yes, he demonstrated interest in developing there and he will be called upon to ensure water and sewer connections along Caron Street, you see. So it's not the only spot in which or place in which he can obtain services that it... Where it could be considered as relatively close to that area or David Street, but this is not a development that's currently underway. But at present, we're not asking a developer to wit Eugène Le Violette to ensure services at present there. They're... All they're asking is that a section be granted access to so that houses be built on the other side. And that's a long-term planning that should be adopted by the Ministry of Public Affairs. Well, the gentleman wants to develop here and the golf course is situated there. Well, the individual that owns the property south of that maybe will never wish to sell it off. Maybe. Are we certain though that the golf club people wish to develop thereof? There's a project ready to go ahead right now as we speak in that area. Councilor Lallon?
We're in a situation here where we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. The original recommendations for the department had conditions attached to it. Now, what was approved at the planning department and at the last committee of the hall goes against what the department had originally greenlit, not as directives go, but with regards to decisions. So this does not have an impact on us, especially if we go to appeal or we can't rely upon this if we're called upon to appear in court to defend what we've decided upon, especially if we vote upon what is before us here tonight. Well, given the new appeal process, I imagine that we'll be going through similar steps as before and there'll be another planner involved to determine whether or not we'll follow along with the same recommendation or not. In any event, if we are to be appealed, other one way or the other, we might as well rely on our department's advice. The United Caddies of Prescott and Russell wish to secure a connection that will ensure future potential development in that area. There are two professionals that are of the same opinion, but this is not the first time that the planning committee has gone against recommendations stemming from the Land Planning Department in any event. It's our opinion that we'd wind up with the same result one way or the other. Councilor Levaire?
I understand the situation. Now, we're talking about two developers here, but really there's only one developer involved in all of this. Someone involved with a golf course that wishes really to secure development, development or development rights in the future. We're talking about one developer instead of two developers. Well, that's... Yes, and that developer represents the interests of the golf club and I don't believe they've made any application on behalf of the golf course people. What you have before you is the very first notice sent out to those who'd be interested in developing in that area. I understand, but what I find deplorable in all of this is that this comes up at the end of the preparatory phase of the development project where we're prevented from going forward at the very last minute. Well, the urban planning committee comes up with recommendations also. Well, the urban planning department approved this also. So and what was the recommendation involved in all of this? Well, the week prior that we were called upon to sit and decide upon this, this was decided. CH Clement put in a lot of money, this developer put in a lot of money, ready to develop and had no other option to obtain access to David Street, south of there. And if he wishes to develop, there's an entrance that leads to the golf course on David Street. I'd find it unfortunate to block a development that's ready to go ahead when we know that we have another option and our intent is to develop so to ensure that the golf course continues its operations. And there are holes all along David Street at a right angle. I've attended... I've played on some golf courses where the streets cross the golf course per se to lead from one place to another. By affording access or affording water sewer services to the developer, we've just resolved water sewer problems in the future. Mr. Lallon told me that there's a 12-inch pipe in existence right there already. I'm not an expert, but we should look into the option of coming up with a supplementary access point south of there. You see, the golf course also incurred a lot of problems with their sewer system. They'd received complaints to that effect, so we might consider giving or offering them another option or the other option that we've been discussing. If they can connect themselves to a... At another point to our water and sewer system. Well, no, it's not... It's not in that same area that you're alluding to. No. Are you aware of the problems that the golf course people have incurred? Yes, yes. In any event, so we have a resolution before us on the table tonight. I'd like to propose another one. Well, we need to vote upon this one firstly. It was moved and seconded. It was voted and moved on and we... I need to call a vote on it. If the vote overturns this resolution, then fine, we'll go to another resolution. I'm calling for registered vote. Councilor Lallon? I'm in favor. Councilor Simar? In favor. Councilor Levaire? In favor. Councilor Belanguet?
Second, second.
It counts for no. Councilor Lallon opposed. Councilor Zandt in favor. Councilor Grimaire in favor. And I'm in favor. So the motion is ratified. Let's go on, shall we? Item 11, agreement for water main looping at Clarence Creek and Bourget. Councilor Lallon? 11.1. Which, Mr. Lallon? André Lallon? Yes. I believe, yes. I'm just waiting. Well, be it resolved, Committee of the Hall recommends or adopt by law 18-68 to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into a signed agreement with STP Excavation Construction for the water main looping project on Landry Road in Clarence Creek and on Russell Road in Bourget in the amount of $2.372 million excluding HST. Be it also resolved that the committee recommends or that council recommends that the Department of Infrastructure and Planning deviate from their procurement policy in order to sole source a contract to WSP Group for the administration and supervision during the construction of the water main looping. Be it resolved that council also adopt by law 18-69 to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into a signed agreement with WSP Group for the administration and supervision during the construction in the amount of $152,083 excluding HST. Seconded by Councilor Belanguet. I asked last time around, what was the cost involved for each individual residences in that area? Well, there are... Well, there are no costs associated with that. If they connect, they, it's five thousand five hundred dollars. There's not one foot left of reserve left over if a developer wishes to develop a subdivision there? Well, there is one, starting off from Chinna going up to there. If a developer wishes to develop a quantity of houses that would like to connect himself or herself to the existing piping, well, there's service, there are services offered along the school district in the Russell part of that area. And I believe there's also some domestic services offered, five thousand five hundred and four dollars involved. Are you talking about the possibility of contractors getting involved in all of this? Are we talking about a ten-inch pipe or twelve-millimeter pipe? That's right, twelve-millimeter pipe. That part running in between Landry, for example, and Henri. We're talking about a ten-inch pipe here. And around the Russell area, the piping might be a bit bigger. Well, the sewer that joins, the sewer services that join up to this area, the pipe there is an eight-inch pipe, and we'll be putting in an additional ten-inch pipe. So, well, see, the pressure will reduce if we don't have another pipe feeding the eight-inch pipe. No, because in fact, we're dealing with a village here and a looping situation, because the looping is fed in in all directions, there's no problem. And this was taken into consideration when we're talking about the pressure and the quantity of water running through there. Our consultants looked at this and took everything into consideration, and we won't go forward anything that might give us any difficulties. All those in favor then, carried. Fine, let's go on now to surface treatment work on La Belle Road. Councilor Levaire? Whereas, the municipal council approved in its 2018 budget an amount of three hundred and six thousand dollars to replace the paved section on Saint Felix with a double surface treatment application. And whereas, at the end of the 2018 budget period, council requested staff to consider installing surface treatment on La Belle Road and Bourget. Be it resolved that council authorizes the surface treatment work on La Belle Road between Russell Road and Lallande Road. And be it also resolved that council authorizes the transfer of one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar balance from Saint Felix Roadwork in order to have surface treatment installed on La Belle Road between Russell Road and Lallande Road. And be it resolved that council authorizes that an amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars be taken from the Roads Reserve Fund and transferred into the La Belle Road project to finance surface treatment work to be performed. Seconded by Councilor Belanguet. Any questions? All those in favor, thank you. Double treatment surface on Bouvier Street. Whereas, municipal council has in its 2018 budget approved two thirty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to install the first lift of asphalt on Bouvier Road from Baseline Road to Vinet Road. Whereas, at the tender opening, the asphalt prices were considerably higher than expected, and over our budget limit, be it resolved that council authorizes to substitute the road resurfacing on Bouvier Road, all the section between Baseline and Vinet Road from asphalt to surface treatment for an amount of a hundred, four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And be it also resolved that council authorizes the increase, to increase the budget for the surface treatment work on Bouvier from three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and that additional funds of sixty-four thousand dollars be taken from the Road Reserve Fund. Seconded by Councilor Lallande. Any questions? All those in favor, carried then, thank you. Let's go on now to paving on Saint-Jacques Street. Councilor Lallande? Council Lallande? Whereas, town council or municipal council approved in its 2018 budget an amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to apply an overlay or scratch coat on Saint-Jacques Street between Marion and Julie Street. Be it resolved that council authorizes to increase the budget for paving on Saint-Jacques Street from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, and that the additional funds of fifty thousand dollars be taken from the Roads Reserve Fund, thereby adopting by law seventeen dash fifty-seven. Seconded by Councilor Belanguet. Questions? All those in favor, thank you. Let's go on now to public infrastructure. Be resolved that municipal council hereby adopts a bylaw. Whereas community services apply for a grant from the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund through Ontario's Ministry of Transportation, and the projects identified in the application were approved for an amount of two hundred thousand seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-six cents. And be it resolved also that municipal council hereby adopt a bylaw authorizing the mayor and the chief administrative officer to enter into a signed agreement between the city of Clarence and Rockland and the province of Ontario. And be it also resolved that municipal council commits to take into consideration during the 2019 budgetary process, the amount required of two hundred thousand seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-six cents from the capital budget in order to pay fifty percent of the related cost to the projects identified in the agreement as recommended. Seconded by Councilor Lallande. Questions? Councilor Zant? Just a question here. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if the mayor or the clerk ought to enter into a signed agreement, or the mayor and the chief administrative officer? Because usually the mayor and the clerk enter into a signed agreement. Well, Mr. Mayor, so that we avoid being penalized, we ought to mention that we have a pedestrian walkway there. Well, a pedestrian walkway was included in the project to allow access to public transportation access points, you see. So, people there have access. Don't you find that Mr. Jubayvel has adopted a little bit of an English accent here, but he's just come from the islands? Thank you, Mr. Jubayvel. Any other questions then? All those in favor, carried then, thank you, folks, thank you. Exemption requests pertaining to temporary structures. Council Zant? Be it resolved that council exempt Mrs. Cadillac from the application of the appropriate bylaw 2017 dash one thirty-three so that her tempo garage erected at five seventy-five Victor Street remain erect all year long. Seconded by Councilor Levaire? Do we have a lot of exemptions throughout the municipality for this particular tempo? None, this is the only one. Fine, well, I know of two others, really. I was getting to that. Do we at present have someone that looks into this? Because just this past weekend, I drove along in the city of Rockland, and I saw a lot of temporary shelters that were still being put up, that were still put up and not, well, Mr. Mayor, we're going to drive around to take a look at those. Are these all shelters that are built in front of the property? Well, most of them are built alongside the property or to the side of the property. We'll look into this then. Any other questions? Councilor Grimaud? I believe that in keeping with the reports submitted to us, there had been complaints, so if we allow an exemption, technically I have no problem with that, but we're driven by complaints, of course. If we authorize the, that tempo shelter remain at a particular address permanently, it could be that we might have some residents that did make complaints to town council in the past that were not resolved. We've received complaints, that's why an exemption was sought. Councilor Zant? You're right to a certain extent. I believe we do receive complaints from those citizens that are required to take down their tempo shelters and then become angry because, and they point out that this person or that person was given permission to have his or her tempo shelter remain up. Well, as I stated initially, this particular residence, well, she'd asked for permit to up, update permission to build a garage, and she was prevented from doing so because there was a right-of-way secured on her property. That's why we're, we granted her an exemption. Yes, if this is adopted, I'd ask that we add a future condition that if she's require, she requires further access, that this tempo will be removed. Well, the city of Clarence and Rockland does have a right-of-way there, that's automatically granted. Council, yes, if we do have a right-of-way, of course, it's automatic. It's just that, you see, if it would have been another set of circumstances, it stands to reason that we could have been the subject, we could have been the target of other complaints, but this particular spot or location was beset by problems in the past, and we could not grant the owner permission to build a garage there. I just want to make sure that this lady knows that we've authorized her to keep her tempo up there all year round, but if we need to go by there, we have to go by there. Well, can she put in a carport? Well, no, they, you know, if the town has to access another point with machinery, the carport will be in the way. And that would, of course, block easy access to that area that might be asked or sought for by the city of Clarence and Rockland. Are we going to come up with a similar type resolution each and every year? No, no. We have to beware of acquired rights then. Do you want to put in a clause stating that if ever the house is sold off, that this be brought back to council's attention? Well, we have to beware because we have, you know, grandfather rights, basically. Well, if the grandfather, the father, the youngster, well, this was, this house was handed from one generation to another and another. If the agreement stipulates that this is temporary shelter and the right, the town of, city of, the city of Clarence and Rockland has the right to remove that shelter, then that's fine. All those in favor? Carried then, that's fine, fine. I just wanted to make a comment here, Mr. Mayor. If there would have been an easement, it would have been less of a problem for us, but if there is an easement in that location, we might revise our agreement to ensure that we have a right-of-way granted to us automatically each and every year. Or if there, in case there might be a change in ownership? Yes, maybe then, Mr. Mayor. So we might consider looking into this. Well, are you in favor then of modifying this to state the following, if the owner stays, changes, or to revisit this each and every year? I would opt for a change in ownership, otherwise we'd have to revisit this year in and year out. If there's a change in ownership, well, that's fine, is everyone in agreement with this? Well, that's fine then, so let's add this now. In case of a change of ownership, the new owner will have to come up with a new request to be adopted by town council, or to be approved by town council. Let's go on now to hiring of a summer employee. Be it resolved that municipal council hereby hire Pénalep Grimaud as a summer employee, community relations agent for a three-month period effective June fifth, 2018, and be it resolved that an exemption to section five point five of policy number RH dash HR dash two thousand and sixteen dash eleven be granted to, in order to allow the hiring of councilor family members in this particular situation. And be it resolved that Pénalep Grimaud's salary is established at level one, class eleven of the current part-time employee salary grid as recommended. Seconded by Councilor André Lallande. Any questions? All those in favor? Carried then, thank you. Councilor Grimaud? May be told now to come back in? Well, that's fine. All right then. All right. I might suggest registering title or write on the title, you know? If I might refer back to the previous discussions on the previous item that we voted on, yes. Well, that's fine, that's fine, fine, fine. All right. Well, Councilor Grimaud, you can attend, I can just tell you that the motion barely passed, barely attended. And was the cake you were eating good or not, Mr. Grimaud? Tell us, was it tasty? Extend service contract for Dave Darch. Councilor Lallande? Whereas, Mr. Darch's engineering expertise is still required by the municipality, be it resolved that his contract, Dave Darch, be extended for two days a week until the end of November the thirtieth, 2018, and be it also resolved that a contract be considered in the 2019 budget for Mr. Darch's services one day a week to support the development charges study be considered. And be it resolved that the compensation remain at a hundred and forty dollars per hour. Seconded by Councilor André Lallande? Questions? Maybe we should, we should deal with this in a closed meeting? Well, no, this is a contract, we don't need to do so. Well, I think we could discuss this open, in, open session. Fine, fine. Question? It was mostly a comment than anything else. We stated that we needed him to ensure mentoring services until June, and we're not going to extend this. Well, because of the Smart City project, well, this was refused, but we spent a lot of time on this nonetheless. But he's not hired to continue with mentoring work, we're making use of his services to get involved in something else. Mrs. Collier?
We have for one year of mentoring. Will we approve Mr. Darch's contract? He said we do it six months at a time, the last time I brought it to you as a contract, because Mr. Lenhart's in his position for one year, excuse me, as of November.
See, from what I recall, it was only till June.
Yeah, the first six months.
That was the first six months.
Yeah, I didn't realize there was a second six months.
So we had agreed at the time, Mr. Darch would be there to mentor one day a week to Mr. Lenhart for the first year. So Mr. Lenhart's in that role for a year, and then we consider the next.
I'm sorry. In the new year, we, you asked for us to extend the contract to another, to another six months, and I remember clearly saying, but that has to be it after that, we have to end it there. We have a director of infrastructure and planning. We don't, very good, we don't, I don't believe that we should continue. Mr. Darch has, it's time for him to retire, he is very servile to me, but we have to draw it along. I can't agree with, this, a hundred and forty dollars an hour is equivalent to over a quarter of a million dollars a year, full-time salary. Even at two days per week, it'll be over a hundred thousand dollars for someone, and services are indispensable, but we said it would be three in June, that was it, it wouldn't go on anymore beyond that, I remember. So I can't accept this at all.
I think we had the wild card with the Smart Cities project that kind of diverted his attention to other things. We still have unresolved in a tradam dump, that we have a ministerial order that we have to get this thing resolved, which I take it is going to take an incredible amount of time this year to get that fixed. I mean, and we also have the development charge study, which is upcoming in 2019, which, again, we know takes a lot of time, so.
But then maybe we should hire something more, somebody more than one day a week, if there's not much to do.
Well, apparently from the, from what I'm getting from the administration.
It says one day a week.
It's enough to make that happen with one day a week. It's enough to make that happen with one day a week.
Just so we can set up in English, it says one day a week, and in French it says two days a week.
Next, it says 2019, I think, is that what, did I read that wrong? Two days a week for this year, one day a week next year.
Because the development charge study, we just concluded the timeline, which will be completed June 2019.
Because don't forget the Bonn-Gaulle Street there.
Yeah, I forgot about that one, but that's true.
Mister Darch is the one that's been working on that, and he knows, he knows the people at the other end. Is that?
Let's be honest, you and I have had this conversation, though, Mister Darch. I think his work is incredible. I think he is very, very talented with engineering and everything that he does. But we can also be honest that we're going to find excuses to keep him around until he's like 150. I mean, there is stuff in this municipality to be done that his expertise would be able to help us with. But I agree with Monsieur Belleguet to a certain extent. I wouldn't go as far as it's not for him to retire, but I would, I would use better words as in saying, I think it's time to start moving files over to the person that was hired for the job. I understand that we may be short on staff or on knowledge on his expertise, however, we could keep him around forever. We've got projects coming out of everywhere. I think it's time, I think it's time to move on and say, I mean, we did say that it was six months and then it began, so.
We should go discuss that.
That's what I asked for.
But we're getting in more and more details, so.
I would just defer to the next meeting.
Well, if we're not completely in agreement with this, I think we should discuss it in a closed meeting. I have a question. Mister Mayor, I'm in agreement with Councilor Belleguet and Councilor Sima in this case, but I would have been ready to adopt the first paragraph that states until the 30th of November. And that would be it. Now, with regards to the Notre Dame street landfill site, of course, he helped us out quite a lot. Don't forget that we've received an order, we have to comply with an order. No, no, we did not, we were not handed, we did not get an order from the ministry.
Or nothing like that?
I can't remember exactly when we all, just the last.
Well, we did get one.
Yes. For the Dipotoune or for the Pond?
Well, they're both together.
They're both, they're both considered at the same time, like they're together, the same project.
The problem is that there were, there were no permits ensuring the opening or even closing. There are methane gas, there's methane gas, gas piping that the ministry has installed there. They told us that documents with regard to this are in the Saint Pascal archives. We need to address that problem, we have no choice. We need someone to, we need to assign someone to this. We're asking that he be hired until the 30th of November, and the next council, given the 2019 budget, the owners will be upon the next council to retain his services or not then. Mister Darch worked on this project, and we have to finish up with this project because we've received an order handed to us by the ministry. Well, Mister Mayor, our engineer attended Steve Byrne's office in Ottawa, and Steve Byrne was not aware of the matter. I met with Steve Byrne, he was not aware of the matter, and he relied on what was reflected in the state of laws that exists at present. Mister Mayor, I would ask that this be deferred to the next June meeting, and that we retire to a closed meeting. Fine then, we'll defer that item. All those in favor, carried then. Municipal bylaws, Councilor Grimaud. 12.1, bylaw 2018-70, be it resolved that council adopt bylaw 2018-18 to approve the lifting of point 30, of the point 30 metre reserve from the Brumar subdivision being block 51 on plan 50M-214. Seconded by Councilor Sima, like confirmatory bylaw. Be it resolved that bylaw 2018-71 be deemed a confirmatory bylaw for measures passed, for all measures passed during the regular meeting of town council of the 6th of June. Seconded by Councilor Sima, adjournment called at 8:17.